You're coming in good.
Are you doing the livestream here? There you go. Should be on, or recording.
So we're hot?
Did you do the, you did the livestream one too? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Alright, well if we're good, they'll call me in order and we'll say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we got everybody, so we got a quorum. I wasn't ordering changes to the agenda unless you guys got some last minute stuff.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion to approve, can I get a second?
Sure, I can.
Naomi does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, consent agenda, Jim, was there any last minute, anything on there? Anybody have any questions on that? What's going on there? We're gonna look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Well, go ahead and make the motion to accept the consent.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Chelsea does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Council minutes from July nineteenth. Anybody see anything on there that we missed or was wrong? Okay, anyone makes a motion to approve, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Sarah does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Alright, the special meeting meds that we have. Any changes or corrections on there? Don't look for a motion. Okay, Naomi makes a motion to approve, can I get a second? Anyone?
I can second, I wasn't there. Oh, sorry, I'm sitting here going through a few little things, yes, I will second that.
Alright, Sarah, let Sarah second if that was there. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright. Alright, public comment, anybody got anything they want to talk about tonight? Going once, going twice. Alright, we'll move on to the sheriff's report, don't think they're here tonight, so.
The only thing I had is just more FY for council, there, I do know that there was a search warrant, or, yeah, a search warrant performed this morning, Southwood, so if you hear of any folks asking about police activity or law enforcement activity around Southwood this morning, there was a warrant that was executed this morning, so I don't know any details about it, just other than that there was active.
There wasn't heavy police presence in town this morning, I was wondering what was going on.
Yes.
I went for my morning walk with my dog and it was four cars in a very short vicinity here, what's going on? Interesting.
So, like I said, I don't have all the details side to that, I just know, uh, that anybody just let us know in case anybody asks about the presence.
Alright, we'll probably pick up Ross in the next go around here. Alright, Lucas, you got nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, number nine is, uh, we need confirmation of the mayor's appointments for two special assessment commission positions, as you recall at our meeting last Thursday, our goal was to do all of them at that meeting, but commissioners weren't available to be there, so we're just doing it tonight. So, the mayor has appointed Martin Holalter and Darren Galdi to serve on those two vacant positions on the special assessment commission, so we just need a motion from the council to confirm the mayor's appointments to fill those two positions, and then we will have the two new appointments, read the oath of office, and then file a written acceptance of the position similar to what we did last Thursday.
I'd like to make that motion. I'm very excited about these appointments, I think these are excellent representatives for our community, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing what, uh, what they can do in the upcoming months for us, thank you.
Sarah made a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Naomi does a second. Alright, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries, you wanna do them?
Yes, so Martin has, um, Darren is, Darren's here.
He's not here tonight, I mean.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have him.
Yeah.
Executed, but if you want Martin to read his oath.
Do you wanna do it tonight, Martin?
Yeah, you just wanna read the oath and then, uh, we'll sign, we'll get those documents signed.
Yeah.
And then also, Mr. Mayor, I gave him the guide that we went over last Thursday, and we'll do the same for him, so he has that as well, so then they're ready to go.
Perfect.
For their first meeting.
Go ahead.
I, Martin Holalter of Horace, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Special Assessment Commission according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Perfect, welcome on board, Martin, thank you. Alright, and then we'll handle Darren when he's back. Alright, so, we'll move on to ten then, Lucas, you got that one?
Yes, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, number ten, uh, is just the POS for, uh, the RIB for twenty twenty-one, so the, uh, for the bonds, the parameters resolution, which is gonna set the maximum amount that the city will bond for, and then the maximum interest rate, and then it also designates you and Brent to serve on the pricing committee for that, uh, so for the, for the first one, uh, that number, so the not to exceed amount is twenty-seven million, five hundred thousand dollars, and this is for the, for five projects that the city did last year, and that were constructed, uh, starting, uh, last year, and then into this year, they're, they're now finishing up, so, so the amount not to exceed is twenty-seven million, five hundred thousand, uh, and the interest rate on that is not to exceed three point eight five percent. So what we need is, is a motion from, uh, the council to approve that parameters resolution, uh, saying that the city will not exceed those amounts, and that the mayor and city administrator are designated to be on the pricing committee.
Is that like, maybe this is a dumb question, but is that like a standard?
Yep, so we, we just did this, uh, at your June meeting, I think your first June meeting, where we did it for, uh, for the temp bonds twenty twenty-one A, so for two of those developments, uh, we did it for, for that as well.
But I mean like the price, like the interest.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, I was gonna say, go ahead.
Yeah, what we're doing, uh, with the not to exceed resolution, the parameters resolution allows Dordia's underwriter, Connors' underwriter, to pre-sell the bonds, lock up an interest rate, talk to investors, not have to necessarily, uh, coordinate with a specific city council commission meeting, when we have the bonds pre-sold, that means we've cleared the market, and we've got investors interested for the total, it'll, actually, with the, uh, the two thousand and twenty-eight bonds, you're due to take those out, refunding those bonds, that's twenty-five million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and one dollars, eighty-five cents, that's just to pay off the, the temporary bonds from last year, plus cost additions, we're actually gonna be at twenty-six million, one sixty-eight, the twenty-seven five is to allow a cushion in case there are premium bonds bid. Premium bonds, investors will pay, as an example, a thousand dollar bond, they'll pay eleven hundred dollars, an extra hundred dollars, and that's to buy a higher interest rate, and they're concerned, these are investors, they're not buying for the return, they're buying for their market, and they may wanna sell those bonds later, and they know interest rates are going up in the near future, so they may want premium bonds, meaning you may, their, your yield will be one percent, but the coupon may say one point five percent, the yield is what you pay, and that's because they pay extra money, premium, so we want to not be locked into being able to connect with the city, and say, we've got one and a half percent interest rate, but we're at twenty-seven, twenty-seven four, when in fact, and then we'd be okay, but if it came in at twenty-seven six, we'd be over the parameter, and premiums, we don't know until we actually negotiate the price, so that's way larger than we're gonna need, as is the three point eight five that Lucas talked about in the interest rate, we'll be at about two point seventy-five.
So like, this is, this is going forward then, with anything that we ever, or is it just for the last?
You've already completed these projects on the.
Right, but I'm talking like.
Just for this box.
These numbers change, uh, every time.
So you'll even see on this next resolution that we do it.
That's what I was asking, I wanted to make sure I was understanding.
We're gonna come back with a final resolution for Cory, I'm ready to approve.
Okay.
And it has to be under those numbers, or they won't approve it.
Okay.
Just to give you guys flexibility, so you can adjust with the market while we're going through this.
And I, I do have the, the booklet here, thank you, who provided me this?
That probably was, that was me.
Thank you.
And that's just the, uh, that's the preliminary, it's called POS. Preliminary officials say we will have a final list on the numbers and everything, that's the document we use to pre-sell the bonds with interest.
Yep, no, this is perfect, so I'm looking through here, mature dates, I'm looking at our current interest rate under two percent, I'm also seeing capitalized interest and cost of issuance, and it matches the numbers you're stating, the twenty-six, one sixty-eight, four oh six.
We're actually using some of the capitalized interest from two thousand and twenty, which is sizeing the value issue to reduce this issue, because we didn't use it all, you didn't go twenty-four months.
Okay.
Great, great.
Thank you.
That helps a lot, so this makes it simpler, instead of every single time, there's a small market adjustment.
Yep.
People within the city can make, uh, a determination without having to wait the cycles to go through council.
Unless you wanna do special, special meetings.
Every week, got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's reasonable.
Alright, so, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Sarah makes a motion. Chelsea does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeff, you with me?
Yep, hi, sorry.
There you go. Motion carries. Just checking, alright, uh, okay, number eleven, go ahead.
Yep, so Mr. Mayor, uh, the next one is for, uh, just temp bonds, um, so, so these temp bonds, you do this parameters resolution this year, and then you'll do it again next year, once it's been permitted, uh, the two projects that this one is for is for Lakeview Edition and Arrowhead Third Edition, so the, the amounts in that one, uh, not to exceed ten million, eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, and for the interest on this one, not to exceed two percent, uh, and so, so also number five, again, designates the mayor, John and Brent.
Do you guys understand the temp bond reasoning? Yeah.
I, I did also add with this one, you know, we just did a temp in July, and it was the point six seven, well, the one point two six net, net interest cost, and we're using the two percent number, really, really very close to the one point six, and we, we came in in July, nothing has changed, now that's given that.
Right.
Right, and, and if we, and if we exceed these certain amounts, then we come back to the commission, go through all. So, there is a check down, which I appreciate, because I think that's extremely important, but I also think that having the levity to adjust to market changes is important, so, good. And that, that amount is reasonable, I remember Lakeview being nine million plus.
That's a big project.
Yeah, so, that's very fair, I'll make that motion as well.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, Naomi does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 There you go, motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, one more thing for the commission, um, I didn't mention that we do intend to lock the pricing in the month of August for both of these issues.
Good.
The definitive issue, the large one, we talked about, first, we intend to price it is the seventeenth of August, the money in the bank on August thirty-first.
Okay.
And the, and the, the temporary issue, the ten million dollars, we'd like to price on August thirtieth and close the first two weeks of September month in the bank, so both of those issues are coming in the very near future.
Okay, good.
Finishing up some work with the audit.
I, I appreciate your attendance here, that really helps answer some of the questions on timelines and things that I, I don't necessarily understand.
And I don't get things they almost write, so, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jim, you got number twelve then?
So what you have before you is the creation of sanitary sewer improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash six. This is a re, redistricting of improvement district that was established in two thousand and eighteen for service to the Horseshoe Bend trailer court in that area, in two thousand and eighteen, they had petitioned the city for, they're on a private lagoon system with an effluent treatment, and I guess no treatment, it's just a lagoon, and they wanted to get out of the city's, the city's system, so they petitioned for improvements to their area. Since that time, other areas have come forward with development, and we've taken a lot more time to analyze the placement of lift stations and where they can be optimized to service the most amount of area with least amount of infrastructure, and in doing so, since that, the Deer Creek Estates plot has been approved, we've started to see some movement in the Southdale Farms, we've already gone through the first edition of Southdale Farms, we're constructing the third addition right now, so, we've, originally, the lift station was gonna be on the west side of County Road seventeen to service Horseshoe Bend, Riverdale, and then the area north of that, well, after doing some analysis and knowing what the, what the lay of the land is gonna be for Deer Creek Parkway or Deer Creek Estates, and the land south of Deer Creek Estates and Southdale Farms, more has been, um, brought to the city as far as what the potential development, what the future use of that land is going to be, and it makes more sense for us to be on the east side of County Road seventeen with that lift station, that way we can get the most amount of users on the single station in the beginning, so, the two thousand and eighteen project district did not go anything, did not go east of County Road seventeen, where Deer Creek Park, Deer Creek Estates will need to ser, will need to be serviced with this lift station, so by moving it to the east side, we needed to create a new district to service more of that area and limit our number of lift stations, so this is, basically, we are getting rid of the original assessment district, and we are creating this new one to move forward with this project, so.
So, Jim, one of the questions I've gotten here.
Yeah.
Sixty-fourth Avenue there, um, there's kinda like a little indent there where there's about, what, twelve properties that aren't included in the district at this point, why would we not want to include them there as well? Where? Yeah, just right south of the trailer park up there.
Oh, that's on the river, that's on the east, west side of the river.
Okay, 'cause I mean, when we go on sixty-fourth, we're on the west side of the river.
So we'll need something on that. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I just wondered if we wanted to.
So, the way that this is going to be, the way that it's planned right now.
Yep.
And this gets ironed out in the special assessment policy as to how we address future connections. And right now, there is no policy to, say, defer or have the sewer access charge, this is the stuff that we'll, we've talked about through the policy, so I made the district big enough that if they do wanna come on, we can bring them on, but it can be more localized once we get through the report, and see what area we can service.
Okay. So I was just wondering, 'cause I know we always talk about, we can have a bigger district, then we can always shrink it if we need to, but we can't make it bigger.
So, so the thought here was that the Greyhawk area, if it were to be assessed in the Ponderosa and the area north of Riverdale, would come around by Riverdale and back to this lift station, where we would need something else to service Maple in that, those, like you said, those twelve lots south of sixty-fourth. That would be on the next station.
Yeah, okay, that's, I just double checking there to see what that was about.
The river and the city boundaries make for a really interesting looking map.
Oh, yeah.
On, on this one, it's not a nice clean cut square.
Have all of these properties received benefit?
Have the potential to receive benefit, and that's where I'm getting at, that it's this, it's this, um, we don't have the sewer access charges yet, so what we will, will do through our, and, report, is identify which ones receive the direct benefit, and then we identify what would be the potential benefit of those, like I said, it's not a, they're gonna be in the district, they're going to get assessed, it's, there's potential there. I don't like to use the word either, but it's what it is.
This is raising hell, with so many people in our community, the fact that we don't have a real clear defined policy on this, and I realize we're working on it, but it creates some headache, um, 'cause some of the people say, why, why, you know, and, and I don't have an answer for that, I think, no, so you drew the district large enough for people that have the potential to have benefit from the lift station. Thought you were gonna wait on this.
Can I, can I listen to what's up for us?
Do you have, do you know where you're gonna put this?
Yes.
Do you have a line to plant it?
We have, we're working on getting an easement for it, it's going to go in that general vicinity.
Okay.
Minus here, the movement here.
You're just doing a little easement?
As of right now, until it gets planted.
Okay.
It's south of Deer Creek Parkway.
Okay.
So, you know what I'm talking.
The same place you talked about before, right, I mean, that's stuff that hasn't moved.
It's moving from the original location west of seventeen to the east side of seventeen.
But I mean, that's still there.
In that little corner.
And the hiccup there is that what's shown as right of way on these maps has gone back to the adjacent landowner, so that's why we have to get an easement there, so what is shown as right of way on the mapping and on the GIS isn't necessarily right of way, it's gone back to adjacent landowner.
And like, there's no way that we can like wait a little bit until the policies?
So, Horseshoe Bend has an ultimatum by the health department of the end of this year to be hooked up and operational. Yep. That's our hiccup.
So that's why we're kind of against the clock here.
We, I would be willing to go through the report and establish the boundary map at that time, if we wanted to do that in a week or so, if that's, if that's something that maybe is more appealing to you, I don't have a problem with that.
I think my big thing is, um, you know, obviously making sure there's no overlap, once the next, you know, lift station goes in on the west side, you know, making sure that we're, we're keeping proper tabs on who's paid what and all that, if there's, you know, a different entity that works on something in the future, not saying that's a plan, but, um, just so that, that is, that, all that information is easy to be accessed, and, um, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough call, who, who should have to pay for it, and when, and how, you know, it's, it's never easy, but as far as like a lot of math, I mean, whether we pull it in now or later, as long as we're doing our due diligence, I don't know that that.
Just out of curiosity sake, does this lift station connect in any way to the new one that they just finished in the last year or two, they're just south of fifty-second?
It's go straight into the, into the line to Fargo.
It does.
Yeah.
So Jim, just hypothetical thinking in the future, here at some point, south of sixty-fourth, going west, the diversion is gonna get involved in development at some point. Okay, so, when we get to that point, is that piping gonna go into this lift station as well?
That would go into the force, our, our connection to Fargo at sixty-four.
Okay.
So we're going from force main to force main.
Yeah.
Of treatment, we aren't leapfrogging stations.
Yeah, that's, I was just checking on how we're gonna put that together.
Okay. But they would have to have their own lift station. Yes. Yeah, so they would have to have their own lift station, most likely on the other side of the river or somewhere to feed that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's, I just want.
Did, um, over in Country Acres, didn't they get assessed for a lift station that's going into Maple Lakes?
Not yet. That's a, that's a, it did include them, it's a proposed lift station, or a proposed assessment at this point, yes, that's one of the ones, it'll be done this year.
So same situation?
Pretty much, yeah.
So when we, Lucas, can you just, uh, just for clarification, the, the policy that we're gonna be coming up with for the special assessments, though, the new one, would apply to this once we get going, or are we gonna take, would the old policy apply to this once it's special out?
Well, you can, as a council, you guys can apply.
Yeah.
What policy you want to apply, but right now would be what you have existing, I don't know when your new one is going to be approved, and they're still public commentary, and so I don't, to say when.
Let's just say, it's a couple, couple months, it's probably the latest at this point, I would think, 'cause we're gonna get the public comments and things like that, so.
Existing policy?
The one that we're currently using, it's basically.
Well, we, we follow Centricode, we don't, we don't have a set policy for the city, we have Centricode.
Well, it's a Centricode in past practice, and how you've done other projects.
Yeah, so the new policy, once we implement it, would probably be.
And I'm not sure what, with the new policy, what's gonna change, you know, with what.
I'm just, right, I don't know, I'm just, just for clarification, when people, if anybody asks.
Trying to be consistent and, you know, obviously people don't like be assessed for things that they may use in the future.
But again, it may not be them, it might, it's, it's the property, it's not the person, it's the property could at some point use it, 'cause they're within the general vicinity, so, whether somebody themselves actually uses it or not, isn't the point, it's the property, so. Comments, questions?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Was this group included in the twenty seventeen dash two assessment?
Uh, everything to the, so, um, the original, the original assessment boundary was, if you got, I just want the map up, do you? Was basically from the diversion to seventeen, everything north of, or south of Ponderosa to, to, um, what would that be, halfway's to Seventy-sixth Avenue, so, it'd be basically the bottom of that map, the bottom of that map up to. So, so, the diversion on the west side, so the Cheyenne diversion, okay, east side was County Road seventeen, the south side is, for lack of a better word, it's a, it's a half mile north of Seventy-sixth Avenue, and then the north line was city limits to north of Riverdale, so can you put your cursor on Riverdale? So since, since that original map, the future land use map has been updated, the compliance has been updated, and there's been a lot more information that's been available, as to why it makes more sense to have it on the east side of the road than on the west, and then, we've had the addition of Southdale Farms, which put in a deep lift station to service the area to the east of seventeen, south of this one.
The only reason I asked is that you're gaining percent benefit on the connection to Fargo, and I was just wondering, these whole state of the same range of fire.
Oh, that project, oh, I thought you were talking about the old one, I'm sorry, uh, that one was city, that was city boundary, citywide, the one you're talking about, that was citywide, so, so, um, except for Maple Grove, now that you make that, mentioned that, Maple Grove. West of the river. West of the river. Yeah, west of, like Maple Grove and. City, city boundary on the east, river on the west, was the one you're talking about, I misunderstood, I'm sorry, Martin, yeah, I under, I misunderstood you, yeah, yes. Yeah, Maple Grove in north. Right. So going all the way up to fifty-second, west side of the river. Yeah, I misunderstood. Yeah.
So, the other thing to remember too on this district is that, if we approve it, the special assessment committee will be the ones that go through and determine, you know, who benefits and who doesn't, and either assign percentages or we'll come up with some other formula, you know, and talking with the engineer and lawyer as to how this is gonna get played out.
Because, yeah, these maps should be like maximum.
Yes.
Boundary maps, this really shouldn't matter as to how tight the map gets, as long as we don't wanna make it any bigger, you know, that, all that really needs to be worked through yet.
We can't make it any bigger.
Right.
Once it's been established, it's been established, you can always make it smaller, but you can't.
Right now is our opportunity to make it bigger.
Yeah. Unless you redo the district.
Yeah.
Unless we redo the district. Yeah, you redo the district, and you can make it bigger.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, right now, if, if we agree with this tonight, that's probably how it stands, unless we either redistrict or we shrink it, you know, again.
For whatever reason, so. So, yeah.
So to clarify, the thought process around this is drawing the district based on properties that currently do or potentially could have benefit from this lift station for us. Future?
Yes.
Benefit?
Yep. So right now, there's no method for if, an area that say, say we didn't include Riverdale, and they came with a hundred percent petition, put in the infrastructure, they would get that at no assessment and be using that system. We don't have that, like a deferral or an access charge or something like that, to have them, the smaller district would bear the brunt of that project.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Motion to approve the district number six.
Okay, the resolution period of the district? Okay, the resolution creating the district?
Yes.
All right, Chelsea makes a motion to accept the district. Give me a second.
I just wanna make it clear that to the people, that just because they're in the district does not mean that they're going to be assessed. All right, then I will second that.
Okay. Amy does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Still thinking over there? Okay, Sarah, I'll give you a chance.
I'll say aye for the resolution creating the district.
Yes, and that is exactly.
All right, and then we got the second one here. Jim, you got that or anything?
Yeah, this is just the resolution that I'll have to prepare the report that identifies that, so.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on that.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Sarah does a second. Okay, Sarah does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. West Fargo School Zone, who's got that? Barrett, you got that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so what you have in front of you is essentially three things. The first one, plat and vacation. Second, zone change. Future land use map change and comp plan amendment. I'm gonna present all of these at once, and then if you'd like to vote on those. Uh, once they're separate, I'll leave that up to you. So, staff received an application from multiple parties, Horse, Lutheran Church, BR Development, LC, West Fargo Public School District and the city of Forest to basically enact various land exchanges and submit with the purpose of dedicating, uh, Lakeview Drive road segment, creating a future commercial lot for the properties that you see on the map. So just to orient everybody here, this is Horse Lutheran Church. This is where the current high school is. And this line segment would be created right here with the future right of way platte with Lakeview addition to the south. So this subdivision, it seeks to replat lot one block one, Lakeview Heights second addition, lot two block two, West Fargo School addition, and an unplatted strip of land of a former railroad bend over approximately one point three acres. So the replat proposes three lots and two blocks with the dedication of a public right of way segment to complete the connection between the existing Lakeview Drive to the north and then the future Lakeview Drive to the south. With, that was dedicated with the Lakeview Edition plat by the city, or approved by the city council on February sixteenth of twenty twenty one. Um, and in addition, the plat would seek to vacate a portion of eighty second avenue south to be added on to the southeast corner of this proposed lot in block one. Uh, the city council approved the purchase of the right of way for the northern half of the proposed Lakeview Drive from Horse Lutheran Church during the June first special meeting. Uh, if this plat is to go through, staff will be coming back to do a certificate of name change to change this Lakeview Drive to eighty first street, or I'm sorry, eighty first avenue south in the future. Uh, moving on to the zone change, with the proposed zoning, uh, staff or the applicants are requesting that this portion that's currently zone A agricultural would be, uh, rezoned to PF Public Facilities to match the, uh, high school, uh, property. And then this property down here is, uh, there's a request to rezone it from A Agricultural and PF Public Facilities to C one neighborhood commercial, uh, for the purpose of accommodating a future daycare center. The third item, when we look at the future land use map, as it stands today, the future land use map proposes this area to be public institutional. Uh, in our, uh, small area plans of the comprehensive plan, it does show a future land use map proposal where this is compact development in the future. Uh, staff feels that would be appropriate to change it to compact development at this time because it would match, uh, the future land use map designation to the south, uh, which with the Lakeview Edition plat, uh, it's proposed to have commercial activity along this northwestern edge of Lakeview Edition. So this would just kinda seamlessly match what's, uh, already existing. Uh, staff sent out, uh, property notice, or, uh, noticed a property owner, staff hasn't received any comments. Uh, staff feels that this meets all of the, uh, intent and goals of the comprehensive plan. And, uh, staff recommends approval as stated in this staff report. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Russ, did, uh, planning and zoning have any concerns or any take on this? Do you wanna share with us?
No, we didn't have any, our only concerns was there were so many moving parts in this. We just wanted to check with both the gentleman, the lawyer and the engineer, make sure that all the eyes were down and all the t's were crossed. That was our only concern.
That was gonna be my next question, because there's a lot of pieces in this one.
We've never, I've never seen such a small piece of land with so many moving parts.
Yeah, so much paperwork, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But other than that, that's, we, we need to have that street.
Yeah, no, I just wanna see if you saw anything in there, so.
No, including, including the, uh, all three parts of it we were playing with.
Yep, okay, thank you. All right, you guys have any other questions, concerns, issues?
Nope, this has been an ongoing process and it has taken a lot to get to this point.
Uh, yeah.
I'm thrilled that it's finally before us, so go.
So let's do these one at a time. I gotta do the public hearing, I know, I gotta keep.
And I think you opened the public hearings for these, uh, on July sixth.
Was it the same? Okay, I didn't, wasn't sure if this was the same.
It would just have continued it.
All right. So I'll go through.
Have on my calendar.
Okay, so as long as you have, as long as the lawyer's got it on his calendar, we're good. So what I'll do is, I will continue then with the public hearing on the plat and vacation. If anybody's got any comments they wanna make on it, going once, going twice, I'm gonna close the public hearing on that one. We also have a continuance on the rezone in the public hearing. If anybody's got any comments or concerns about that, that'll be a time to talk. Going once, going twice, I'll close the public hearing on the rezone. And we have a continuance on the public hearing for the future land use map. Anybody got any comments about that? Going once, going twice, okay, I'll close that public hearing. All right. Uh, I know Brenton likes us to do these separately, it's just for accounting purposes. I'm gonna do the plat and.
For minutes.
Just to keep you, yeah. Um, so we're gonna do vote on them separately, A, B, and C. Um, so I'm gonna be looking for a motion to accept the plat and vacation on the A portion of thirteen.
Make a motion to accept that plat and vacation.
Okay, Amy makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Yes, of course.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, and then on the rezone, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion on the rezone if that could.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion on the rezone. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, rezone approved. And then the future land use map, can I get a, uh, motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion on that as well.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. There you go, Brent, that's gonna make it easier for you. All right, fourteen is table. We will move on to fifteen. Who's got that one?
So I will take that one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, as you recall, at your meetings, your previous meetings, we've, we've discussed, uh, Arrowhead third edition. This is the development that sits adjacent to, uh, County Road seventeen just south of Horse Proper. And just for clarification, uh, from the council on, uh, what type of either buffer, fence, or trees the council desires to have. That the butts County Road seventeen, I know there's discussion on it, but have we ever hammered anything out? So the developers representative is here, uh, so we can have that conversation, uh, as far as, you know, does the council just want privacy fence installed? Do you want trees, uh, installed? Or is it possible for the engineers to work out, uh, some type of berm in this location? And then once we have that figured out, I'll include it in the ID agreement for this project. Uh, and then we'll have the, the council approve the ID agreement.
Okay. Jim, do you remember we talked about this a little bit? I don't know what is feasible along the road there and what is not. I mean, is it, I mean, privacy fences.
Talked about multiple options, either there being a raised berm or there being a privacy fence, or there being some form of trees. We talked about trees.
The berm, is that even feasible based upon the right of way?
Brian Fangels here from, he's looking for developer on it and give us idea of what he's.
Yeah, what, what is doable and what is like good luck to us type of thing?
Yes, uh, I can meet the commissioners. Um, looking at that as the berm, I just found out about this recently, so I'm a little behind that. A little behind the eight ball here on this. Um, I can tell you right off the bat that the owners, the landowners intention is to place a privacy fence along the County Road seventeen and the north boundary of the plat.
Okay.
That is their current intent to install that. Um, regarding the berm, I think it becomes a little difficult. Uh, I'd have to go back and review that as far as trying to stylostat because you are gonna take up, um, an eastern portion of a lot depending on how tall it is. I mean, for example, your standard three foot berm at a four to one side slope is gonna be about twenty four feet wide.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big berm, so it'd shoot a lot, a lot. I don't know if that's physically possible with the zoning code and standards to take up that much of the rear lot and still have those lots be buildable.
Does it need to be four to one?
Uh, for long-term stability and mobile, yes. Uh, you can probably go down to about a three to one. But that becomes real difficult to mow, and either they have to be mowed and maintained by the homeowners, because obviously they're gonna be there and they're gonna be the ones maintaining it. Um, so if it's not maintained, it's just gonna look bad and ugly, and that's sort of the four to ones, kind of the the steep as you wanna go for mobile, mobility. Five to one's better, to be honest, for a functionality standpoint. Um, and then three to ones tend to be a little unstable sometimes. They kind of erode, they're kind of a pain to, to maintain. Um, so four to ones, kind of that, with the soils we have in the valley, that's sort of just the general rule of thumb as far, that's about as steep as you wanna go for maintainability and just long-term durability of the berm. So, no, I can't say definitively how that would affect the lots. I have an anticipate, a, just from my gut feeling, it's probably gonna shoot a lot, a lot on the, on the east side. Um, because additionally, we have utilities that are currently along that east side and drainage us that serve that. Um, because we don't wanna drain into the county right of way. Uh, so we actually send our drainage north to the north property line, the storm sewer is located, all that will be located along there.
And that's going to the west across that railroad, correct, Jim? Which is desirable to several different locations. Okay, all right.
Correct.
Okay, so the berm, um, couldn't be moved over, anything?
No, because that becomes, it moves into the county's right of way if we try to push east of our property. So then we get into issues with having either the county give us an easement, um, in their drainage way, uh, because it's their right of way. Um, or we sort of try and figure out what it works up now with them. I don't know if that's possible.
Give you an easement.
They typically don't wanna give you easements in their right of way for anything. That's just general, they like to preserve their right of way for roads, paths, that sort of thing. You know, that's pretty typical for any city or municipality wants to preserve it on right of way. They generally don't like private development in their right of way.
You know, I was, I was at the planning and zoning meeting where this was discussed, and there was some concern about that transition. And there was a particular member that really had some strong feelings about that, and I, I wanna respect that. And I think that there's a way we can buffer some of this. I'm, I'm hearing that the berm, if you will, um, creates a lot more difficulty. So the other two options were natural plantings or, uh, some sort of fencing.
Yes, correct. And like I said, the owner, the current developer does intend to put a fence along that rear east side. That's part of their intent, along with the north side is their intent. I did confirm that with him this afternoon. He obviously can't be here. Um, but I did confirm that with him by phone this afternoon that that was his intent.
And what would that fence look like? Are, are ordinances? I know that we've got some ordinances that come into play on that.
I don't know the specifics on the fence. Uh, it would be a privacy fence, uh, whether it's six or eight feet, I do not know.
Six feet, eight?
So, um, that would be something we'd have to work out with the developers, as far as the final look and feel of the, uh, the fence. Whether it's, you know, maintenance free east to your, wherever it may be, I don't know that. That's sort of what we have to work out with.
So when you're driving in your car on the road, on the highway, and you're looking straight over, like, what's the distance between that top of grade to your eye? I mean, I'm guessing it's about six feet.
Give me a second.
Yeah, can you see it's like over the fence?
Let me, let me look at the grade here. So, the road sits nine twenty-two-ish, and our back of lot lines for our grades are roughly nine twenties. The road's gonna be roughly two feet higher than the back of the property is currently, based on our grading here I'm looking at.
Plus another, I mean, your eye level is probably four feet up from that.
Something like that.
Car or if you're in a truck, you're probably more, you know, eight. There are fences to the north there on seventeen, and they are. Around a berm. They are on a berm. Yeah. Yeah, they're very nice. They are. We should try to match. Very well done. So.
Willow doesn't have berm, though.
No, she's.
But that was there before the county bought right of way, probably, I believe.
But immediately north in Willow Court, there is, it's not berm there.
No, it's not immediately north. I'm talking north there, up by Chester, exactly where she's referencing. And outside of, there's one or two stretches that are needing some paint, but realistically, the others look nice. And do the job they're supposed to do, because I walked out of this world, you cannot see at the road height over those fences, it's desirable, so. The, the, the road, the view from the road, um, whether it's, you know, an entry level home or, you know, an upper level home, it doesn't matter. Looking at a berm with trees is just so much nicer for the community. I mean, and obviously, I'll shut up about the berm, uh, friends. But the point is, like, a six-foot fence, and especially if it's just a wood fence, you know, they don't hold up, they don't last. So is it really, why would I, do I really even care at that point? By the time people's yards or whatever starting to deteriorate or, you know, get overgrown, that fence is not gonna look very good anyways, and you know.
Right. I would prefer if we're gonna have to put a fence, or it'd be a maintenance-free one, that's gonna have some survivability.
So, one thing I would wanna expand on, or just touch base to your whereas, typically when a fence is done, not saying every single time, but the trend has been maintenance-free in pretty much any new development we've had. Um, like, like, you know, Jim, cause like Lost River, Terror Gardens, all those different ones that we've had, new developments going on. Where there is a fence present, it'd been maintenance-free. Uh, that's where most of the developers have gone. As for if there's a berm or not, or if we do some landscaping, a suggestion I would have for council to consider would be if you do any tweaks to the developer agreement, is encourage, you know, maybe a little dialogue of just saying, uh, the council, you know, you like to see landscaping such as vegetation, fence and/or a berm or something, so it leaves it open to where, and then what you're trying to accomplish, screening from the high, from the road. That way, that way it gives flexibility as the engineer, uh, Brian is working on the plans and specifications. He has the flexibility with Jim to work together of, okay, how could they accomplish it? But it's not tied down to one specific, oh, this is our solution, and if the solution doesn't pan out, you're not halfway through the song, and then we have to come back and change it again.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree, but we need to have a level of common sense when it comes to budding up against seventeen there. And six-foot fence, when you're two feet lower than the road, ain't gonna cut it, so. Yeah, it should be, the ordinance needs to be changed, I think, for that, and I, I'd love to see something higher than six feet go into this development, along with some evergreens, you know. If we can, and, and I'm, I'm a big fan of the natural vegetation. I mean, you come look at my yard, and you'll see the thirty-plus trees that are planted there. Including an apple tree that I just found apples on. I'm all excited, first year, woo-hoo. Um, but I can tell you that if we're going to do a fence, it should in some way, shape, or form match what else is up on County seventeen already. I mean, this up and down, up and down, up and down, legal-looking stuff, i- it is not gonna look nice. So, um, not opposed to a maintenance-free fence at all. I think that would be good, but I also agree with Chelsea that some type of vegetation along there, because there is quite a bit of vegetation further to the north, too. Um, trees, bushes, dogwoods, things like that planted outside that are, are absolutely beautiful and really provides some nice screening. And I don't know what we would have to do to make that legal eagle with.
Just how much you want, I'll put it in the agreement.
Can we make it a variance? I don't know.
For the fence ordinance, if you guys wanna change it, we can do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're on the highway, if we're on an arterial, it shouldn't be six feet, should be eight.
I don't know where the six-foot cap came into play.
It's just a direct.
I think it's standard. It's just a standard majority of the fences are six foot.
And when you're in residential that's off a, a main road, clearly that would be sufficient typically. In this particular case, because we're dealing with a road that's been there for a long time and we have elevation and grade differences. And because there was no berming, I think that there's an incentive that needs to be made so that the new development will match existing all along Seventeen, if that makes sense. Maybe my opinion is out there, but I think that makes sense and I think it will look nice.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, yeah, personally, I don't feel like we do have any consistency on Seventeen, so we just need to form that, you know.
We need to make some. It's a very major thoroughfare that's getting more and more major as we speak and it's going to get more and more major. Then we're gonna have arterials, sixty-fourth, seventy-sixth, eighty, oh my gosh, and a hundredth. I, I mean, literally you just go down the road. And it, it's gonna just go non-stop and we need to really have a common sense approach toward what we're going to do for all of those corridors. And I'd like to start looking at that now.
So, I mean, if we can accomplish that, look just some, you know, what, what Brenton had said, some directive in reviewing the plans and specs, but, um, I think you guys get our drift.
I'll be honest, I don't. I don't know what to do. Like I kinda do, but like no berm, okay?
It's like, no, well, we, we, of course we want a berm. We want, you know, they did a great job up north, you know, at Chestnut or whatever. What's that town they call?
Chest, River Oaks State.
River Oaks State.
Okay, so they did a wonderful job screening those backyards, you know, for the most part. Um, so.
It makes a nice walk on a sidewalk too.
The goal is to not see anything. That's the goal. We can't do the berm, a fence probably, you're still gonna see over it. You know, if we can get some landscaping, that'd be great. Um, an eight-foot fence would be great. That's gonna, you know, stand the test of time decently, you know.
I, I don't wanna cap it at just eight feet, whatever it has to be to match what else is there. And I, I don't know what the existing elevation is. I'd have to shoot it.
Well, that'd be a pretty tall fence, I think, to get up to what Chestnut, to what, uh, River Oaks house, yeah. It'd be pretty tall to go up on that berm.
So the Chestnut lots are two forty deep. Arrowhead Third are one fifty deep with twenty feet of easement on that same.
Twenty feet of easement?
Two ten-foot easements. One is an electrical transmission line, the other is a ten-foot utility and drainage easement. So we're taking down a one thirty to throw, to put a berm in there like Brian said.
Right, and we can't, it sounds like we can't, if we, if we had any chance of doing a berm, we would have to try to get, you know, any easement from the county, which, you know, it's basically right in the city, so they have maybe.
And those lots are getting filled too, aren't they?
We don't need to.
A little bit, along adjacent to Seventeen?
They are getting filled a little bit. I mean, I could tell you.
Yeah.
We could do like a.
So they're gonna be.
So, yeah, roughly, roughly the finished floors of the buildings are about a foot taller than the, uh, than the road edge.
A one-foot berm, eight-foot fence, you're at nine feet.
Well, no, I'm just looking at, sort of getting into the details of it of where if you express the desire to have some screening and see what the engineers can come up to you with. But if you include saying you'd like to see screening, elements of screening such as natural vegetation and/or fence within ID agreement. That addresses, I believe, in general, what Lucas was looking for. But then, like I said, it falls back on letting engineers work up what they believe would make sense, what can actually be put in there feasibly. Cause who knows, they might be able to accomplish something. You know, they may not be able to do your conventional berm where it stands at five feet. But I was hearing Brian talk about how the road is about two feet higher than the back of the lot right now. Well, maybe you go two feet, that gets it right up there and then you put a six-foot fence on top of that, well, that's six feet where you have a road. So it could, it could do the screening unless you're driving a semi or something else, which you're probably not gonna be blocking the screening anyways from. Uh, so there's some different things that they could look at and that's what I'm trying to encourage that you keep that in mind when looking at, that's from the plans and spec side. But you could push the conversation through the ID agreement, saying you'd like to see some screening along here within that ID area.
I think it's absolutely imperative and in this particular case, the screening along Seventeen and matching to the best of our ability. What is existing to the north and creating a standard as we move forward, which naturally would encompass just this particular development, but several others. Um, I think would be in our best interest. Is that something that a person needs to make a motion? How does that work?
Well, we're working on the ordinances, so I think we, Barrett can pass this along and make sure that that conversation is had, right Barrett?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other element I just wanna bring up, food for thought, we'll visit another date, but you're talking about consistency along the corridor.
Right.
That's element you typically, typically would see within a corridor plan. Uh, I know MetraCog, do they have left door money still? Russ, do you know? Don't know. So that's why I, I could reach out to MetraCog and ask them if they still do have money left door that they need to use. They typically would use for corridor studies. Uh, but that is typically an element that you would see within like a corridor study, saying this is how we want the corridor to look. We don't have one on County Road Seventeen. We have a couple of different ones going on, one for veterans, one for, uh, seventy-sixth. I don't believe those are ever wrapped up yet. So we have a couple of different ones. They're out there.
I think there's one that is being requested for sixty-fourth.
Sixty-fourth was there and change the scope of the Veterans Corridor Study.
Yes.
To cover sixty-four.
So am I crazy as a resident and tourist for our main thoroughfare to request a corridor study? So that we can encompass some of.
That's what I'm saying is I could, I'll come up.
We'll do a last.
I'll, I'll approach, I'll approach MetraCog, ask them, do they have funds available still? If not, if they do, then I could bring up the topic saying that there's interest of seeking funding for a corridor study. And see if we can get some assistance with doing something like that. Um, but like I said, that's where you had the corridor say, cause it outlined the vision of what you would wanna see along that whole stretch. Uh, you're talking about consistency along that corridor. Right now, uh, there's wood fence, there's chain link fence, it's all over the place. There is not a consist, there's not consistency on there right now.
Also, you know, when you're talking about corridor study, is it just Seventeen? Because there's a lot of different areas of Seventeen that I feel like would be treated a little bit differently. Or is it our arterial roads are, you know, this is the standard for our arterial, the standard for secondary. Yeah, so something that would encompass all of our roads, what are our expectations for anything regarding them.
Like the arterial roads.
I don't think the intent is to complicate this, but we're looking at some fairly explosive growth within our city. And having some standards instead of this, you know, flat by the seat of our pants, every single one, I think would make some sense and it would bring some.
Yeah, and that's what we're working on, you know, and so I think this is, this, this development has brought up a huge conversation that it will, we definitely need to continue and, and follow up with.
So what do we need to do for you, sir, to give you a better idea of what we're going?
I need some direction because this has implications for the plat as well. Because if we are to require a berm, I'm gonna have to move easements and I also have to talk with power line company. Because they have clearances around their lines that they require as far as clearance. So I have to, I don't have an answer on that. I won't have an answer without going back and looking at some stuff. Um, there's a lot of different people I have to talk to. Uh, we also gotta look at these zoning codes for lot buildability as far as size and setbacks and all that stuff to make sure everything still fits. Um, and then, um, in general, yeah, it's just gonna be kind of a, I need some direction as far as what you would really want out there. Cause if you're gonna dictate a berm, I'm gonna have to go back to plat, move easements. The plat's gonna have to go back to planning commission, am I correct on that Barrett?
Sorry, state that again?
If I move easements, would I have to go back to, with planning commission with the plat?
Yeah, cause your easements are planted, they're not documents.
That's correct.
In order to be able to keep it moving forward, if we don't include the requiring a berm, I think Lucas has what he needs to be able to address ID agreement. That doesn't tie the hands of the developer and we'll still see what we can do about site distance, cause it may still. I think that's a conversation that our engineer, engineering, our staff and Brian, their side, they could all have that conversation.
This was the other thing to consider, too, and we're talking about putting in vegetation, trees and things like that, but we are, we'll be doing that underneath the power line. So there'll be some considerations there that we're not gonna be aware of as well.
Yep, and they have their own existing easement there, so they're their first, they kind of have the first say on things. So they're typically, I wanna want trees that are taller than ten feet maybe planted, that grow tall, so you're talking.
That's a pretty small tree.
You're talking a shorter bulloped tree.
Which makes me feel like we would want a berm then.
Well, yeah. Why can't you have like a, a smaller berm and then have?
I do, I'm a little frustrated because I feel like this is what I was saying the first time, is that this is gonna get pushed along so far and then we're just gonna get stuck with whatever we get.
Yes.
You know, this is the third time we've been talking about this and bringing this thing up. You know, does that make sense a little bit? Um.
But the easements haven't changed and all that, I mean, that's still exists, so I mean, we're still having to deal.
Well, but now we're six weeks later, you know.
But nothing's changed per se. I mean, we're still dealing with the berm issue. It would have been day one because we're still, we still have the easement thing. So, I mean, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, if we can't do tall tree, I mean, if you, if you're very limited on your trees, you're gonna be putting in like, um, Japanese lilacs, like very small trees, nice looking trees, um, but smaller trees, so.
Not necessarily. I'm sorry, but this is our main thoroughfare. And we're talking about a development where we've got a number of lots and people are gonna be living and I think some thought needs to be put into this. It, it's not, it's one thing when you're off the beaten path, it's completely another when you're right on the main thoroughfare. And I'm just not willing to compromise, um, without reason.
I mean, but that's why, that's why, one of those other meetings when I said, hey, can't this be figured out before we get to this point? And then I just had like blank stares. So I'm, I'm kinda confused because I think we mentioned this before and I said, well, shouldn't this stuff be figured out before we even?
I guess moving forward, a question I have for the council is, would, would small trees not provide enough screening? Is there really anything beyond that?
Because you have the road that's up higher than the backyards. I think the problem that we're having is we don't wanna look in people's backyards.
We've already had some of them here several times that have an issue.
They'd be ten feet tall, so I mean, that would solve your issue, wouldn't it?
Well, with the power line, you know what's gonna happen? How are companies gonna come through and raise them all? And I speak from experience, cause I installed power lines. So it's not gonna be great. And if you look at the majority of the species of trees that are along County Road Seventeen, outside of the bushes and things of that nature, it's a lot of what appear to be a, a hybrid or something other like a cotton, you know, they're very tall, they're very majestic, they're very elegant. And you've got some other trees further south, but nothing like that. It, it creates a beautiful corridor, it really does, and it's something nice to look at.
We have six months over the year where the trees don't have any leaves on them, you know. If you can't plant evergreens, the trees do nothing all winter, so.
True, and there are some evergreens planted north of the cemetery there that looked very great.
But you can't under a power line.
Yeah, I don't know the vultures on that, but they're, they're gonna ask for separation distances on that for anything they plant. And if anything, they don't, we do plant, if they don't like it, they're just gonna come in, hack them off.
So I'm just gonna say that I would request a two-foot berm with an eight-foot fence. And ideally some, some plant, some trees planted as well. Just, I'm just gonna say and move on from that.
In this particular case, I, I would love trees that may be more of a homeowner thing in their own backyard planting trees. I, I struggle with the power line being right there because I know what's gonna happen.
Right, the trees.
But I don't wanna sacrifice the trees. I'd like to see some trees in the development, some sort of landscaping. But I do agree with a berm and a fence, whatever height that may use for uniformity, an attempt at uniformity.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the stuff further to the north. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. We'd have to go take a look at that.
I don't think you're gonna get uniformity necessarily as consistency moving forward, we're setting a precedence, you know. I think if we could, if we can require a two-foot berm with an eight-foot fence. I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a fence designer, but an eight-foot fence doesn't seem too high that it would be an issue, um, you know, to maintain.
I don't know the height limits. Do we run into any issues with building permits or building codes threatened on that?
We would need to.
Tom, you can override it.
We would need to change it.
We can override that.
No, I meant, yeah, there's certain states that, obviously the state statute, the city code as far as building height fence, I think some of the trips, building permit requirements depending on code requirements and such. Again, that would be to.
Yeah, and I think people living there would appreciate privacy as well, so.
Okay, so we're gonna go, so we're gonna have him look into two-foot berm, we're gonna have an eight-foot fence. That's what we're gonna look. I don't wanna, you've already kind of beat the dead horse here, so unless you guys got something else.
I'm feeling like I'm not a very nice person now.
So, the same electric line that runs adjacent to Arrowhead runs right where you're talking about, the berm and the fence. There's a power line in the same vicinity, so.
Do we know the height on that power line?
I do not, but that's where we put the blue spruce and we put the other, uh, blackmail spruce in along that line. And they haven't been trimmed yet, but.
They obviously will be. The tops will be cut off.
And they're, they're, I think part of the reason we did that too is because they aren't as tall of tree, so, yeah.
Yeah, blackmail takes a long time.
But we weren't under, directly underneath them, we were west of both power lines.
And this is in fact directly underneath them or within the?
The, the fence, the power line, overhead power lines are directly on the property, the east property line of the plat. So, that runs, it's slightly adjacent inside of Hitty County, right, but it's basically right on the, right on the, uh, right on the property line here.
I kinda wanna go drive it, look at it. It's gonna become very clear when I put a set of eyes on it.
Yeah, looking at it, it was showing up on my map, showing on a topo here. It's within a foot instead of the property line, on the east end of the property line, give or take. Based on what I'm looking at. Again, I'd have to, on a scale, so I can't tell you exact, but roughly based on the scale, yeah, you're within a couple of feet of the property line.
Okay, so, any more discussion on that? Cause I think, like I said, we've pretty much figured it out here. Let's see what we can do with the two-foot berm and then the eight-foot fence.
Main easement.
Yep, we'll do a maintenance-free fence on that. Let's see what issues we run into as far as the easements go on the two-foot berm, so we're gonna have to be cognizant of that as well. So, anything else, guys?
Do you want us to wait then to discuss the overall ID agreement until you're back?
Well, cause we should probably know what, what we can and cannot do. If the two-foot berm is gonna cause trouble, we're gonna have to review this again.
Yeah, I mean, let's just table it. We've had this discussion. I mean, we're obviously struggling a little bit here, so let's just figure some things out before we move on.
So let's look into that and then you can get back to Jim or whatever and then sort of find out what we can and cannot do. And I think it will probably get a little bit more definitive here at the next meeting. Alright?
I just wanna be pinned to a corner.
Yep. Okay, anything else we need to do on this one? Okay, well, that's all. Thanks for the.
Okay, thanks everybody.
Any questions?
Alright, we'll move on to sixteen. Jim, you got that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First thing I have to pitch you on is the chorus connection to Casper Water Users. Bids will be opened on Thursday. State Water Commission meets next week, Thursday. Hopefully we get good bids. We take it to the State Water Commission next week to get our cost share with them, so. Uh, the other, of course, proper water replacement, I believe the Industrial Commission met last Monday. I haven't heard yet if they approve the loan. Brenton, have you heard if they approve?
I haven't.
So, um, that one is kind of in the, and it is jeopardizing our completion date. So, that is something that we will have to discuss once we are aware of the loan approval and moving forward with that one, so.
Who do we need to contact for that one? It probably wouldn't be bad to follow up. They are aware of it. We just, I'll be talking with the N on it. What it is, is a matter of being able to make sure that we can pay the bills and then get reimbursed from State Water Commission. So it's that floating of money because the overall plans, they have our diversion settlement funds, be able to cover our amount, but the SRF loan is to cover the in-between.
And that in-between time, it's, it's just a timing of events with all the different entities, so.
Please keep track of delays due for date.
Yes.
And then let's take, let's take a look at where we're at when the funding comes through.
Yes, the plan is to, once the notice is proceeded issued, is to get a meeting before we even start, just to make sure we have reasonable expectations of milestones and, and milestones going forward, so. Uh, the Industrial Commission did see both of those projects, the connection Casper and the Horace, the water replacement as one loan, we bundled them together, so.
Oh, okay, Jeremy.
Yeah. So that's, that was good. Um, what you have in front of you is some lay down items, put together a project summary sheet, this was a little bit late this week, I was gone last Thursday, Friday, but in the next one, it'll be out with the package. The first project we have is Southdale Farms Third Edition, as you can see here, the project is about forty percent complete. The water ma, or the sanitary sewer mains services are about ninety-five percent complete, water main is ninety-five percent complete, storm sewer is a hundred percent complete. Last week, they worked on the culvert extensions on County Road seventeen, foot, they finished up the storm sewer and started subgrade preparation for the street work. Uh, work anticipated for this week is, uh, subgrade work for the streets and then gravel base. Second one we have is Terragarden's Third Edition, Terragarden's Third Edition was just started last week, it's a three-point-eight percent complete, four percent round numbers. Uh, last week they did a lot of topsoil stripping and exporting topsoil, uh, stockpiles. Um, work anticipated for this week is the starting of the underground, um, nothing has been completed as far as the underground additions are on that one. And that has a completion date of November thirtieth. Next one we have is Lakeview Edition, that was started last week as well with topsoil stripping, it's about ten percent complete by dollar amount, so. Um, last week they worked on mains and services for sanitary sewer and this week they'll continue on that, this has got some deep sewer on it, so it's taken a little bit of time to put in there. Right now they've got three groups on, on this project, at least they did starting, starting today. Uh, sanitary sewer, thirty percent complete, haven't started the water, water mains yet and they haven't started, started the, uh, storm sewer, so. Uh, the last one that I have to pitch you on is Maple Lake Estates, that project had a completion date of June thirtieth, so we're thirty-three days beyond that. Um, you'll see, you probably saw on the estimate that we did assess the liquidated damages of, I think it was twenty-nine, twenty-nine days for our quantity cutoff. Um, that is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar per calendar day assessment, so. Right now, the remaining items are, I think you have this there in front of you, is the power to the site, Cas County Electric, uh, seating, hydro mulching of blocks one, four, and five. Installing inlet protection, I don't think that's going to hold things up. Uh, the storm sewer lift station, need to install the panel and make sure the, uh, station is operational. Light poles, there are some remaining light poles to be installed on a hundred and fourth avenue.
How many, do you know?
Uh, less than, less than six, I think there's, I think there's about six or so that are remaining, I need to be less than that. And then, uh, the pond aerators installed and operating, operational, uh, their punchless stuff is nothing that's real, real major at the, at the moment. And then, uh, the sanitary sewer lift station, put the control panel on and get power to it. Um, you may have noticed out there last week that we had to do some adjusting of the gate valves and there was some pavement removal to straighten out the curb boxes on those, to make sure, that's a Casperill project to get on, to get on those project, get on those. Um, Southdale Farms First Edition is complete, we just have to do the final paperwork on that and the same with the last year fifth edition. The path lights came in early, they weren't supposed to ship until this month and now they are up and up, up and operational, so. Things were, looked in our favor for once, so.
So Jim, is, is Cas County Electric the one that's having trouble getting it in on there or is it just a scheduling conflict or where we?
So the contractor happens to be here tonight and I don't know if you want to address some of that Eric or, or not, or?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Since you're here, might as well, might as well hear from you.
Council, Eric Murray with KPH. So, uh, Maple Lakes, we had completed, substantially completed by July fifteenth, fifteen days past the completion date. All the items that Jim went off are related to power, which we can't install until we get power on site, which is Cas County Electric. So we're actively working with them, trying to get it out there, but that's not part of our contract, they come in independently and then we just help schedule them.
As I was going to say, so it's a scheduling thing, waiting for them to bring it through on site?
Yep, and they're, they've been actively, like, they were there today working, but I don't know when they're going to power up the site. Which involves getting the lift station panels installed for the sanitary, for the storm, and the remaining light poles.
Okay, um, we're going to have a little talk here because I can tell you that I have been an electrical contractor before. And providing power to the site requires advanced notice, I want to know how much advanced notice Cas County Electric was given for this project?
It wouldn't have been through me, it wouldn't have been through KPH.
Okay, so who's responsible to coordinate the power to the site?
Might be the developer.
Okay, so we have issue with the developer coordinating the power to the site. The seating and hydro mulch has nothing to do with power, inlet protection, again, Jim, worried about it.
Right, completed and completed, inlet protection, seating's all completed, that's been completed since July, first of July.
Good, the storm sewer lift station requires an electrical panel that can be completely installed and simply not fired up, um, is the panel installed?
No, incorrect, it cannot, it will corrode, it needs power on site to run the dehumidifiers on it.
Okay, for the lift station?
Correct, for both.
It's not a three, or beam a three-on or a four-on enclosure?
I couldn't tell you what the exact specs are, we were told by Sweeney Controls, we cannot install that when there's no power on site.
Interesting, okay, light poles, why do we need power to install light poles?
They're waiting on three of them to get the wires pulled because they don't want to lose their copper wires in the, in the line, if they're not installed. So they're waiting to pull the wire, install it and hook it up, for Scott's Electric.
And those guys I saw working over at the school earlier this week. Okay, pond aerators. Any ideas?
On the pond? Yeah, once again, waiting for power to get them out there and hooked up.
So Sweeney's doing that for package?
Uh, some of it, we're, we're.
Basically, they're telling you it's not coming?
No, no, they're not, they're performing just the, just the, um, just the panels.
Just the control.
We're, we're installing the pond aerators, the two ponds are dry, there's not even water in, on the ponds. So we've left them on site, present, ready to be as soon as there's water in them. They may not even get installed this year if it doesn't fill up either.
And there's a sanitary sewer lift station on here?
Correct.
Okay.
Per another contract.
That is true, but that is one of our requirements for getting this buttoned up is to get that, so home builders can be in there, need sanitary sewer, obviously.
So home builders are wanting to get in there, is my understanding correct?
We have twenty-some lots that are waiting to get built on.
Okay, so what is it going to take to complete this, we're just waiting on power, waiting for Cas County?
Correct, correct.
And Sweeney, um, Scott's has absolutely no excuse whatsoever, tell them to get the butt out there and get those light poles up. And the pond aerators, obviously, is something that will come with the lift station. So seating and hydro mulch, is this stuff all ready for seating and hydro mulch, is all the vital grade work?
It's already been, yeah, it's already been completed and the hydro mulching and seating.
So that's done?
Yep.
All right. So, no idea on timeline, who's coordinating with the developers, is that you, Jim?
Not me, no.
Who does that?
We coordinate with the contractor, that's who the city has a contract with, the developers, or, or they coordinate the dry utilities.
Okay, so you haven't coordinated with the developer?
Yeah, well, I've been coordinating with, yeah, with, with Eagle Ridge Development and myself.
So what are they saying about?
We haven't got back at the exact time yet.
We need to figure this out, we had a meeting not that long ago where I said I don't want to deal with this again, and I was dead serious, I don't want to deal with this again.
Yeah, and the one reason too, I were fifteen days late too on this contract is because I fired our last subcontractor that wasn't performing for us.
And that subcontractor had a contract with you on this project?
Correct.
So you had to replace them?
Correct.
So you're making improvements?
Yes, correct.
That's what I want to hear, okay. So this is good news, I'm pleased to hear that you're making those changes. I would like to see some priority put on this, um.
Yeah, well, we are for sure, I mean, because we're trying to get the lots sold and developed.
Yeah, and I think.
But it's not in our contract too with Cas County Electric.
That puts you at a very big disadvantage to try and get this stuff done.
Well, I don't, I mean, this has happened on other projects too where there hasn't been power to sites, I mean, it happened last year on.
Yeah, I do want to point out though, um, this was extended, this project was extended, the time, completion date was originally last year, this project was extended. So there, there were extensions tied to this project, so just letting the council, so you're aware.
So to develop another forty more lots, that's why it was extended. Correct.
At the developer's request.
At, at my request.
Yep.
Yep.
And there were other things, it wasn't all complete, I don't believe, at the time, so. Anyway, so it was extended.
What do we do to stop, how do we have to work together to ensure that we are supporting one another so that we're not running late? Because every time we run late on a project like this, we have to keep our bonding open, we have to keep forces from engineering on the project, we have to be involved. There's dollars, and this is something that we went through in our last meeting, and we explained the line item that outright. And I don't really want to do that again on this particular project, so I'd like to see good faith effort to get to this point and. I've worked with Cas County, they're not that difficult to work with, but they do require an advance notice. And typically, they will come out within a set period of time if things are ready for them. And that's why I'm questioning, is everything for them ready or not, where are we at with that?
We had them on site June fifteenth, before our completion date, working there. So I mean, we've been actively working with them prior to even our completion date. And we've had, we had the project substantially completed July fifteenth.
So what's the deal with the final?
I, I don't, I don't know how their system works, I mean, I know they're on site with some other people trying to figure out where to put transformers, they didn't know about the lift station in the far corner, so I mean, I think there's been a lot of logistics that they just didn't know about. I don't know where they're at and how they get their power, when it comes in, where it comes in from.
Can we set up a separate meeting? I would like to do that, I'm going to take this offline. I want to get a full and complete understanding of what's happened here, where we're at, and what needs to happen. And if I have to get involved and help with calling Cas County, I will.
Yep. We'll get something said. I was just making notes here because I'm wondering about Cas County Electric too.
I, I'm curious why this is an issue, it's August for Pete's sake. And if they've been on site since the fifteenth, there's no excuse. What's your schedule look like in the morning, Jim?
Uh, we have a nine o'clock Zoom meeting and then after, uh, after ten-thirty I suppose.
What do you have before nine?
If you make time.
Yeah, and they can't be too far away because they're all there cutting wires and setting boxes today, so. But they haven't given us any indication, and then once they get that done, then we can install the rest of our stuff, but we can't install any of it until that's done.
Good, I'm going to go out there and drive it tonight, I would like you to meet me in the morning before your nine o'clock unless you need time to prepare for your.
We'll talk, we'll talk after.
Thank you.
Okay, Jimmy, you got anything else?
That's what I have for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on, yeah, Brendan, you got it.
Couple items, uh, August fifth, this Thursday, Special Assessment Policy, public meeting, six PM at the Fire Hall, so make sure you're aware of that. Uh, North Dakota League of Cities Angle Conference is September sixteenth through the eighteenth. Uh, the first day of that, they're going to have elected officials workshop, if you have not been to it, or even if you have been to it, it's a good workshop to go to, if you've been to it before as a refresher. Um, they just go into just different topics that are very helpful for elected officials to be aware of. Um, I've been through it once, I believe, Corey, twice, so. If you do plan on going to the League of Cities Conference, please let me know, uh, so we could coordinate logistics, hotels and registration, all that, so. And last item I had, uh, is finance director position, the posting is now closed. Uh, we'll be going through the interview process in March, or, uh, in August here and into, it could go into September a little bit, just depending on the sequence of events. I just got an email here from the recruiter this afternoon, so we'll be locking in that schedule here later, probably middle of this week here, so.
How many did we get?
Six. Not very many applications, but, uh, they said that we have some good can, or quality applicants for it, so that's what they've indicated.
We're competing with Morehead and Cas County for the same areas, so.
There are quite a few entities around here that are looking for finance directors, Cas County, uh, Morehead. Uh, the diversion authority is going to be looking for somebody, and we are too. Uh, this is a position is typically fairly difficult to recruit for, uh, that was what the recruiter indicated to us from the beginning. Uh, it's very obvious based on the number of applications that we've had, but hopefully we have some good strong candidates and I have not seen who those candidates are, resumes or anything at this time yet, so. Yep, but the next step will be, they'll do a video interview, uh, with the candidates. And then we'll be able to see their answers, responses, some of us will see that. Then it'll be shortlist and then there'd be in-person interviews, so that's, in, in general, the next steps, so. Uh, we're looking at towards end of August, early September for in-person, so that's general ballpark timeframe we're looking at right now.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, portfolios, I guess mine was just, you kind of brought it up, but yeah, the League of Cities is going to do the elected official kind of, uh, go through things. Like I said, I strongly encourage that, uh, all the new members of the council go to that, that's on Thursday. I plan to go hopefully Thursday through Saturday, I'll be out for that thing. That is in September, I believe it's the fifteenth, weekend of the fifteenth, whatever those numbers are. So, and it's in Bismarck. That's all I've got right now, Sarah, what do you got?
Nothing too extensive, um, just more meetings, working on obviously our conference and plan, taking a pretty good look at that. Had some questions come in from some locals about Ironwood, Jim, I don't know if you got that email from me? There was some locate flags over there on Ironwood, want to make sure that we're answering their questions, if you could send me a response on that, if you're.
I did.
You did? Really, I didn't receive it.
That's Ready Tech stuff going in, yeah, pretty much any, anytime you see a bunch of flags up, that's what's going on.
Really?
Yep.
Didn't come through, we'll talk after the meeting, thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that. Um, other than that, looking forward to the upcoming work with planning and zoning and our Horace Bean Days, so I will pass that on to Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, Bean Day is coming up really, really fast, I just wanted to do a shout out to Sally, she's doing a phenomenal job, um, getting all, all of this stuff squared away. There's a lot of, um, different things that are going to be happening this year, and so, um, if you guys want to check out the horacebeandays.com and you can sign up for all different kinds of things and, um, check out the schedule and, um, just kind of be ready for a fun weekend, I think it'll be great. Um, if you have any questions, um, that, you know, that you might have, you can definitely get in touch with myself, uh, Chelsea and Sally. But otherwise, that's kind of what we've been really working on, um, hitting it hard on that.
Okay. Chelsea, we?
Um, I don't think I have anything to mention, but I was wondering if Derek could give an update on the ordinance. You know, we had that meeting, but I don't really know much about what's going on.
Yeah, there's been a lot of conversation, that's been going back and forth with our consultants, we're trying to get some sort of draft, uh, together of certain pieces of the ordinance to bring forward to the steering committee. Uh, I think some of the drafts that were provided wouldn't have met our expectations, so I've asked to go back and look at those, but. Uh, I've been told that you should have support this Wednesday and then, uh, we'll have a meeting this, uh, Thursday, uh, with the consultants to discuss it and then we feel that it's ready to go also to the steering committee.
Okay, so are you, um, like comfortable with the progress and do you feel better about it?
I think it depends on what we see this Wednesday, that'll kind of be the determining factor.
Okay, anything else? Jeff, you got anything you want to add in here?
No, I'm good for tonight.
All right, but the only thing others, I did forget to mention is that Ready Tech had their groundbreaking last week and I want to work for that. Uh, I've got to talk to Brent Sanford for a while, that was kind of nice, we hadn't had a chance of sitting and actually just talked for a while, so that was good. Um, and our, uh, state delegation was there, so I got to talk with them as well, so that was all good, kind of touch base and where we're at with stuff, so. All right, and with that, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. Chelsea, and can I get a second? Naomi does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thanks Jeff, we'll talk to you later. Thanks, Jeff, we'll talk to you later.